3:00 PM, we're going to call to order the town of Bay Harbor Islands quasi judicial public hearing. Madam Clerk, first, I guess we're going to do the pledge first. Can Mateo please come up? Mateo? Can everyone please rise?
I dedicate allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God in the name of liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Just hold on one. We have a few things to say about Mateo. Mateo Del Campo. You're a fifth grade student at Matter Beach Academy. You have two siblings, Simone and Tomas. Enjoy spending time drawing, reading, and his favorite pastime is soccer. You're a proud Bay Harbor resident since birth, and you're proud parents of Martina and Rodrigo Del Campo. So, thank you so much for privileging us with doing the pledge allegiance as a token of our gratitude. We have the certificate of appreciation, so we'll just take a picture. Do you want to say something to everybody? All right, well, thank you so much. Here you go. This is for you. Okay, number three, one, two, three, and more. Big smile. Very good. There you go. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Yaffe.
Here.
Councilmember Sauber.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Moreno.
Here.
Councilmember Fuller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bruder.
Here.
Mayor Manner.
Here.
All present.
Number one, please.
Mayor.
Yeah, you want to do this.
May I just swear with all those who are going to testify during this quasi judicial public hearing, raise your right hand, please. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so how are you doing that? Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, number one, please.
Public comment with respect to an application for rezoning of property located at 9601 East Bay Harbor Drive, lots 35, 36, and 37 of block four. As a planned unit development, PUD zoning overlay, the applicant Bay Harbor Hotel LLC has gone through the review process with staff planning and zoning where the project was approved, subject to town council approval. The application consists of a seven-story building with 96-unit hotel, six floors of hotel rooms, over one floor of common area with pedestrian permanent.
Okay. If you want to make public comment, there's a sheet in the back, so you can just sign up, and we'll get that in order. So, first, let's see, public comment. Name is Alan. Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. It brings back, actually, lots of memories here. I was a Bay Harbor resident. I raised my kids here. I lived in this community for 20 years, 10340 West Broadview Drive, and when our kids grew up, we moved to Surfside. And so, again, I can think of a lot of times I was in front of this council on a variety of different things. What a great community you have here, by the way. I was asked to come here this evening by the Grand Day. I'm the president of the Azur condominium, 9401 Collins Avenue, and they are the building just directly north of us. And they asked me to come here this evening to talk to you about any concerns that you might have relative to the traffic. And I can't address specifically the concerns that you have. I can address the concerns that we had, and I can tell you, we were very concerned. We were concerned about a number of different things: traffic, noise, of course, people. And as it specifically relates to the traffic, the way our building is situated is you have an ingress and an egress in the front of the building. And our egress is where their ingress, literally, it's within maybe 30, 40 feet. We were concerned that with effectively the traffic coming into the hotel, if they got any backup, it would make it difficult for our residents to leave our building. And so, we spent a considerable amount of time talking to them, looking at traffic studies, and I will just tell you, we have not had one problem. And so, the reality for us was, they did studies, we did studies, and the city, the city of Surfside, did studies. And we have not had one instance where our residents have not been able to leave the building. I can tell you that I can't even think about a traffic problem that we've had with the building. Even though I wasn't asked to specifically comment upon it this evening, they did a phenomenal job. I don't know if you remember, but we had that little hotel that was kind of run down there, and then what they did is they tore it down and left a big hole. And what we were concerned with when we first heard that a hotel was going to come in was the issues that I just talked to you about. We have not had a problem. They've been great neighbors. As a matter of fact, one of the things they did is they extended a courtesy discount to our residents to use their hotel, the restaurant there. If you haven't had their ice cream there, it's worth going. Okay? So, I come here specifically to talk about the traffic, and I will just tell you that that has not been a problem, and I will go a step further and tell you that they have been great neighbors. So, I thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Next, we have Egal.
Hi, Remy. My name is Egal Adial, and I live in Surfside, and I actually manage the waste condominium. The waste condominium is basically right next door to the new hotel, Grand Beach Hotel, in Surfside. They, when they started construction back in 2011, we had the same issue about the parking. We thought about the parking, it's going to be a problem, and we made some studies, they made some studies, and after two years of operation, I can tell you that we don't have no problem whatsoever, no parking issues. That is actually better than expected. Not only about the parking issues that you guys should be concerned, that you guys should concentrate more on, not only on the parking issue, but lifting a little bit Bay Harbor. Bay Harbor, when they're going to build the hotel eventually, hopefully, this area, the whole area, is going to change. That's what happened in Surfside, and that's why you guys need to see further than the parking. Because the parking, you can see there is no problem with us, with the neighbor next door, with all around the area. You can go sit down there, and the parking is perfectly fine. You guys are supposed to think about lifting a little bit Bay Harbor Island, because the whole street of the area is completely dead. Every time you go there, there is no traffic, there is no people walking in the stores. And since they built the hotel, they completely haven't had any change completely. And that's why I'm trying to explain to you guys. So, I hope you approve this project. I believe in the project. I think they are very honest people. They did a great job next to us, and hopefully, you guys are going to approve it.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Jeffrey Koster.
I think the project is a good project. The only time I see traffic being backed up is when there's construction open in Surfside going over, and other than that, it seems to be fairly well, fairly good flow of traffic. And I'd like to see that go up next.
Okay. Any other public comment? Hearing one, hearing twice. All right, we're done for public comment. Next, we're going to get to number two.
Approval or denial of above's rezoning application by consideration on second reading of the proposed ordinance granting approval of the PUD on the property located in 9601 East Bay Harbor Drive.
In accordance with the town of Bay Harbor Islands' prior granting approval of a planned unit development, PUD uncertain described property located at 9601 East Bay Harbor Drive, determinates that the PUD application complies with the purpose and intent of the PUD ordinance, making findings regarding the approval of the PUD application, directing the town manager to make the appropriate notation on the official zoning map, providing for stability and life on effective date.
All right. Can we have a motion for discussion?
I'll move it.
We have a motion, a second. All right, let's go down from the beginning. Councilmember Moreno.
Just opposed to this project. A hundred rooms, I'm opposed. I don't like the traffic. I don't like the parking. I don't like a lot of things about it, but it's all up to you guys.
All right. Councilmember Reed.
Are we going to hear any of the changes that might have been done to the project itself since the last time we saw it? Have there been any physical changes?
Good evening. Joel Simmons, represent Bay Harbor Hotel LLC, the owner of the property located at 9601 East Bay Harbor Drive. I will, I'll keep this brief. We appeared here on October 13th, seeking approval to build the 99-room hotel with associated parking. And during that meeting, we offered some further information aimed at helping the council be more comfortable with the project, as well as some suggested changes, following which the council voted in favor of the project at first reading. The suggested changes were a reduction in the number of keys from 99 to 96, an increased provision of parking through payment into the parking trust based on 21 spaces compared to the 11 required spaces, increased staffing of the valet operation to be reviewed by the town manager, fourthly, for the applicant to pay for a peer review of the independent traffic study for the project to be commissioned by the town, and fifthly, to seek the approval of our northern neighbor to the opening of the restaurant to the public who walk up to the property. The plans you've got in front of you reflect the appropriate changes, and we're here in front of you tonight with a review of the two remaining items that require follow-up from the last meeting for the second reading for what we hope will be your favorable decision. The traffic study, we have carried out the peer review, the town has carried out the peer review, which we've paid for, and I'd like at this point to thank Mr. Tinter of Tinter Traffic LLC for having carried out that review fast enough for us to get back here tonight, and would suggest that I actually hand over to him at this point, so he can give you details of what his findings were.
My name is Alan Tinter. I'm president and owner of Tinter Traffic LLC. We're in Fort Lauderdale, Florida. Just as a little background, since this is quasi judicial, I've been practicing traffic engineering now for 44 years. Received my bachelor's degree from the University of Connecticut in 1971, my master's degree in engineering from the University of Bridgeport. I'm a registered professional engineer here in the state of Florida. I was previously registered in the state of Connecticut, but I haven't practiced there in quite some time now. I've been, had my own traffic engineering business for approximately 25 years here in South Florida. I have appeared as expert witness in a number of places, including the city of Battle Harbor on the review of some of their projects. I've conducted peer reviews for a number of traffic studies, and I was hired by the town to conduct the peer review of the current traffic study for the proposed development. Before I go any further, I guess, would it be appropriate for me to submit my resume, just so you have it?
We already have. We have it.
The town manager has it already. I was asked to do a review of the traffic study that was completed by David Plummer and Associates. I believe Juan Espinoza was the traffic engineer responsible for the completion of that study. The study was submitted to the city back in May of 2015. I received it approximately two or three weeks ago to review. I completed my review of the study. The study was done by typical traffic engineering standards. I found the methodology that was applied reasonable, the assumptions that were made throughout were reasonable, and that the conclusions that were reached in that study were supportable. And that is, that the level of service will not be detrimentally impacted by the construction of this 96-room hotel. Level of service right now on Kane Concourse is level of service E. I'm sorry, I believe it's level of service D. What is acceptable is level of service E, and that's based on your comprehensive plan and the county's comprehensive plan. The level of service on your local roads is level of service D, again, consistent with both the county and the town's comprehensive plan and land development regulations. That level of service will not be impacted. I did find one area that I was concerned about as I reviewed the study. The engineer for the project assumed that background traffic would grow, two reasons. Number one is natural growth of traffic, and number two, because of developments that have not, have been approved by the city or the town, but not yet built. The traffic engineer for the proponent assumed that since the growth rate on Kane Concourse and on A1A have been negative over the past, I believe, eight years, they assumed that the growth would actually start to be in the positive direction, and that it's about half a percent growth per year, and that's typical in the industry. Past eight years, traffic volumes went down because of the recession we went through. They dropped more drastically during the 2007, 2009 period. It's that negative growth slowed down, but it continued until about 2013, 2014. First of all, the study was done, only 2013 data was available, so I looked, and the 2014 data is now available through the Department of Transportation, so I felt that the growth rate should be reviewed once again. I did the review independent of what the Plummer folks did, and in fact, the negative growth continued in 2014, so the assumption of a half a percent growth was reasonable. The other portion of the background traffic related to the anticipated traffic from, again, approved but unbuilt developments, and you have a considerable number of those around the area, particularly here on the East Island. I received copies of data from the town, your town planner, Mike Miller, showing where the development was going to take place, those projects that had been approved, both north of Kane Concourse and south of Kane Concourse, to see if the estimate of half a percent growth was reasonable. It was not. Half a percent growth, as I indicated in my letter about COVID-2019, the half a percent growth when we increased the traffic volume on East Bay Harbor Drive by five vehicles per hour during the peak hour, and on Kane Concourse between 18 and 22 vehicles per hour. When I looked at the traffic volumes from the approved but unbuilt developments in the area, I estimated that there will be 123 vehicles per hour on East Bay Harbor Drive, north of Kane Concourse, 243 vehicles per hour to 290 feet, 105 vehicles per hour on Kane Concourse. I provided that information to the town manager. The town manager then provided that to the applicant, who had his traffic engineer review the information. A subsequent report was submitted to me on Friday, adjusting their analysis based on this additional information, and they concluded that, once again, the level of service would not be impacted by the construction of the 96-room hotel. Again, I find that the methodology was sound, and the conclusions reached were supportable. One thing I noted to my conversations with the town manager, there seems to be some question, I got 123 vehicles, and that seems like a lot of cars. It's really, it's not. It's only one vehicle every 30 seconds. 30 seconds is a pretty long time to wait between vehicles. It's not a significant volume. Right now, Kane Concourse is carrying about 2,200 vehicles during the peak hour compared to that increase that we're talking about of about 200 vehicles or 250 vehicles on Kane Concourse. That results from all of the development that you have already approved. There's some small ones and some large ones. There's some that are four-unit condominiums, and there's some that are 60-unit condominiums. There's a restaurant that was approved at the hotel on the west side of the island, plus some office space that was approved south of the site, of this site. We took all that into consideration. Again, level of service came out at an acceptable level of service based on what your, the town's criteria are. I found the report acceptable, and I pass that word on to the town manager.
Great. I'll answer your question.
Actually, just to go over that, so basically, the original report underestimated the vehicles per hour. Well, they estimated it at five vehicles per hour, and it's actually almost 125 or 25 times more.
That's not the traffic from the development. That's traffic from other developments that you all have approved. That's correct. They didn't have available to them, just, not that I'm trying to defend them. I'm here to have reviewed the study to see what, if there was anything that needed to be corrected, and there was, and they did. At the time that the report was completed in May, they had no information available to them about the number of projects that had been approved but not yet built. I received that information in late October from the town planner and the town manager, and passed that information on to the folks at Plummer Associates, so that they could more accurately reflect the actual amount of.
But just so the audience is clear, I'm reiterating some of this. We've got the list, you know, and what's attached to this are actually 20 projects, and give or take, there are some more coming, there were some more, but since May of this year, there certainly has been an awareness of these projects. So, you're telling me, these are not simply projects between May and October of this year? They did not include any of the previously approved new projects, say, for the last two years?
That's correct. And I've been in that position myself when doing traffic impact studies. If the information isn't made available to us, there's no way that we can.
Can you ask? Can you draw it?
Generally, I ask, and I don't always get responses.
But you know, you read the paper, and there's a growth spurt. You take, you come here once because they counted for the entire month of August, and you can just see the cranes and the activity here. It seems to me like that would be a very important component to inquire about.
Councilwoman Reed, I agree with you. It's an important component. It was overlooked. It's been corrected, and the results are the same, number one. Number two, even with that additional background traffic that we're talking about, the volume of traffic on Kane Concourse is probably not, just about back up to the, will be, when all of those projects are completed, will be back to the level that it was in 2008. We're just getting it back to where it was. I mean, you had, apparently, and I haven't been involved with the town of Bay Harbor Islands in the past, you had a period of time when some projects either stopped, went under, went bankrupt. I mean, during the, during this crisis that, during the economic crisis that we had, it had an impact on some of the housing units here in the island, number one. Number two, you have some that are now being redeveloped. Some of these sites, we assume, were brand new, and in fact, what they're doing is replacing something that may have been taken down a few years ago. So, I don't think it's, I don't really fault the consultant for not having that information reflected in this study. That was a reasonable assumption. I've done it myself. We had better information in October that we were able to utilize, and we asked the consultant working for the property owner to do the same. It's been done. It didn't change the results of the report.
Thank you very much.
Tom?
But I'm not done with my comments.
My question's been answered.
Yeah. You know, I just, I just want to say for the audience that we started off the conversations about this project a few months ago, and the word "trust" came up over and over again. And not really from me, because I really had no predisposition. I've heard, you know, nothing but wonderful accolades about this company, these developers. It's my colleagues, actually, that, you know, took the time to get on the record that there's an issue of trust with, you know, this particular property. And I have to say that even though this report was reviewed and cleaned up, and the results might be the same, which include also lowering the grade of the traffic from a C to a D. But I just have to say that this leaves a really bad taste in my mouth about trusting these consultants' reports. And I hear it all the time from constituents. They always say, well, of course, you know, they're bringing in their consultant, it's spun, and, you know, we have to believe in the professionals. However, you know, we also live here, and, you know, we observe traffic at that corner, at that intersection, on a daily basis, sometimes more than once. And, you know, we see the ramifications of the school zone, and one vehicle pulled over, and one truck delivering to the restaurant across the street. So, we have to make an informed decision as advocates for the people who live here and who will be living here later, who are buying these lovely expensive condos. So, I just have to say that this traffic report, although, you know, you're saying that it supports the original one, to me, it just, it shows how problematic it is, and I still have questions, and as a former law enforcement officer, I have huge concerns with the density of this project and the traffic problems and the parking problems that it will bring to that area. So, for that and for other reasons, like I've stated before, I will have a very hard time voting for this.
Isaac?
You know, has the petitioner finished making his comments? Because I'd like to hear everything that, I know we stopped the traffic, but was there any other changes?
Yes, there's one other thing that, there was a second open item. We did reach out to our neighbors to ask them to consider the idea of opening the restaurant or bar to the public. And to help them in the, in the process, we offered to put them in touch with our neighbors in Surfside, who have been here tonight, to get assurances from them as to the way that we operate our bars and restaurants. And we also suggested the idea that they could retain some kind of control in terms of perhaps operating hours or the ability to stop the operation if it caused any disturbance. At this time, they are not comfortable with the idea of opening the bar or the restaurant to the public, and we respect that. It's my hope that, assuming we get the permission to build this hotel, that once we start operating, that they may be willing to revisit that and perhaps agree to it. To conclude, and I'd like to thank Mr. Tinter for appearing here tonight for the work that he did. Again, we've gone further in the analysis of our traffic generation than has been required for any other project in this town. We've applied much tougher criteria. I hope the council, in the majority, can conclude that our traffic study was correct, and that this project will not be the cause of traffic issues in the town. I respectfully request your approval, so that we can build what we know will be not only a great asset to the town visually, economically, and as an amenity, but will also be complementary to the remainder of the development in the pipeline. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had, you know, something came up, I guess, tonight, that Mr. Yarkin had mentioned. He said that you offered discounts to local residents at the Grand Beach in Surfside. Would you extend the same courtesy to residents in the town of Bay Harbor Islands? They have, you know, they want to be guests, you know, our residents with Bay Harbor Islands' driver's licenses. Would you be able to offer Bay Harbor Islands' discounts as well?
As long as we cannot be accused of trying to buy the council.
Yes.
Anything else? Josh?
No, I just, I'm going to stay on with my previous comments, which is, I think, quite honestly, I think this helps revitalize Kane Concourse. I think it's important along those lines. At some point, something is going to get built there, and that's one of the problems, is that as much as everybody talks about traffic, as much as everybody talks about other issues, it's not as if this piece of property is going to stay vacant forever. And I think this is the right partner, at least it seems to be the right partner, to put a project on that quarter. I'm going to be voting in favor of it. I appreciate you reaching out to the next-door neighbors and asking about the restaurant. If they don't want it, then it shouldn't happen, but I do appreciate you asking them.
Thank you. I appreciate the audit of the traffic study. It was a good suggestion at the last council meeting to do that. No one's infallible. I suppose people could ask or not ask, whatever, get certain information, but, you know, the information was provided to the auditor, to Mr. Tinter, and then provided to the Plumber Company. They revised their numbers. I think it's clear, regardless of who should have or shouldn't have asked for information, that the result is the same. The level of service is not, you know, affected or not changed, and I don't think we can hold it against this particular project that there are other projects under development in Bay Harbor Islands, which may or may not be built in the future, which may or may not increase traffic on those particular streets. I mean, we told you this project, how it will benefit the community, how our community will benefit from it, and so forth. And I think that, you know, my concerns have been allayed by, you know, this additional traffic study and about the changes that you've offered in the project and by your willingness.[1800.53] willingness to work with the neighboring property owner, as well as bringing in, you know, your neighbors in Surfside, who I think, you know, I've known Mr. Yarkin for a good number of years, and I think that, you know, the statements that he made are, are important, as well as the other neighbor to show that your organization is a good neighbor to the neighboring properties and to the community, and will benefit the community. So I intend to vote for the project.
Stephanie?
I have no comment.
No comment, okay. I'll make a few comments. I, for one, was, was pleased to have a secondary review of, of this study, and to be quite honest, I'm not necessarily surprised at the result of it, you know, to be quite honest, I thought you did a very good job, Mr. Tinter. And again, I would, I would, I have to agree with my colleagues that, that just because, you know, someone is the one who's bearing the news that you may like or may not like, that doesn't mean that they're the ones to blame. It's very evident through two different independent studies that, that it's not going to have an impact. I will tell you, from my perspective, despite what the professionals say, the two things that, that I want to continue to press is making sure that through the manager, that the parking is designated not in, right behind Kane Concourse, and that it's, it's in a, in a place that we can determine is, is appropriate. And the second thing that I, I think is also appropriate, is I remember the last time we had the PUD meeting, staff had originally kind of washed out, to some extent, the approval of, of Mr. Miller's original comments pertaining to the valet staff. And, and I would ask that, you know, if this does go through that, whoever, that, that we can make sure that Mr. Miller's comments are, are put as one of the recommendations pertaining to having a specific number of valet staff. And, and I don't think that's, that's difficult. That's not something that's, that would be too terribly difficult.
It's in the ordinance.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying that in the original conversation, when we originally, Mr. Simone had it, it was, they didn't have specifically numbers of how many valet you were going to have at certain times. I, I think, I think the original comments was four and two, and now I see Mr. Miller's comments, it has at least two valet staff members. I guess that's, that changed, or maybe I'm wrong, that it didn't change.
I think, and look, Steve Warnick, address one Southeast Third Avenue, and looking at the ordinance that's on the agenda tonight, there is more specific language that's been put back in in condition E.
Yeah, I know. I just want to make sure that that, that is something that's mentioned, because despite what somebody says, and, and again, you know, Councilmember Reed makes a point that, you know, regardless of what the study says, you know, we're the ones that got to live here. And I think that certainly making sure that we have staff at that hotel, if it's built and approved, to take care of, of the cars that turn right onto East Bay Harbor Drive, that, that's going to make a difference. And, and I don't want to have a conversation a year or two from now hypothetically saying, well, you know, we don't have enough staff. You know, you don't ever want to come back and have that issue. I think it should be very, you guys should be diligent in making sure that, that that's taken care of, you know? Okay?
Yeah, and before, before we vote, I just needed to put something on the record, which, that I had, you know, fairly in-depth conversation with the mayor of Surfside in relation to the Grand Beach Hotel, and all phases of their construction and operation, and he only had, you know, very, very positive comments about the addition of the Grand Beach to Surfside. And I had also had the opportunity between last meeting and this meeting to speak to a couple of residents that are directly affected, you know, by the project and by the construction, and they were actually all supportive of the project.
Great.
I think I mentioned last week also that I was speaking with the mayor of Surfside, had some of the conversation, and reported that the government of the town of Surfside was very pleased with, you know, the cooperation that they received from the developer during all the process of building them, and it's subject to an operation.
Okay, great. All right, so barring any other comments...
Wait a minute, I have, I have a question.
Sure.
I know this is quasi-judicial, and I'm a newbie, I don't know everything of how things are handled here, but if there's anyone on this council that has anything to do with the sea escape as they're getting remuneration, should they abstain from voting on this?
I mean, that's a question between anyone on the council and, and legal counsel. Are you saying that you believe you have a conflict of interest?
Well, not me.
Oh, okay.
I'm asking if anyone else on the council, if they're, have, if they have business with the sea escape, they're also getting money from this project, and now again, there's a financial interest. So what I'm saying is, should someone abstain on the council if that's, you know, or, you don't have to abstain, which is...
I mean, that's, that's a question between the town attorney or the ethics commission, the secret member of the council. I don't know who you're talking about, so are, are you saying that someone here has, has a conflict?
I'm not saying someone. I'm saying that if someone does or is doing business with the people in the sea escape, should they abstain from voting? I, I don't know. Like I said, I'm new here.
Okay, when, when you got...
It's a very straightforward question. Councilmember Morano is simply asking, is there anybody in the council who has business with the sea escape? If so, then we would leave it to the town attorney to determine or advise whether...
I haven't heard, and no councilperson has inquired of me, which is usually the way it goes. A councilperson will ask, is there an issue, and then we will opine. But so far, no one has raised that issue.
Well, that's where I saw last time Mr. Salver had to abstain, and I know some people do business in the town, so I mean, it should be either disclosed, or it should be abstained from vote, from voting.
Okay, well, they're good questions, and you're, you're entitled to answer, and the answer is no, unless there's a direct financial remuneration, direct financial connection between the project and a councilperson.
Right. And when you're asking if whether I'm the accountant for the sea escape, I am not.
Listen, I know you're an accountant. You have a financial interest in this town. Mr. Yaffe has a financial interest in the condos here. I'm putting it out there, that's all.
And between our, I think, between our 37 years of experience, I think we understand when we have to refuse ourselves.
All right, so one more public comment, and so we're going to hear Mrs. Newhart, and then move on. So Mrs. Newhart, please come up.
Question one is, I wasn't here for all of the answers, so. While one in the 9601 East Bay Harbor Drive applicant applied for a variance, a five-to-seven majority vote by council, ordered in section 23-26. Question two, at 11/9/2015, they deleted second public comment concerning council approval of new applicant. Now it's 20 TBRs for 40 additional hotel rooms and 40 additional parking spaces. You double with the hotels. Instead, on 9/26/2015 public hearing, the applicant discussed purchasing 13 parking spaces within the 500 square, uh, feet. And question three. Question three. After the consecutive two public hearings, 9/16 and 10/13/2015, why hadn't council discussed the applicant's request for 20 TBRs that would have possibly needed 40 additional off-street parking spaces? August 4th, 2015, the PNC Board approval of 9601 East Bay Harbor Drive site plan, on the town planner's 612 2015 white papers, he stated that the requirement of the council approval, the hotel usage was not consistent with zoning classifications unless town council approves a PUD. Number of rooms was not consistent with the comprehensive plan unless council approves 20 TBRs to this hotel development. And when you're talking hotels, rooms, that's basically two rooms, so you have 40 rooms and 40 parking spaces. Everything's doubled in a hotel. Please, the council members should be favoring only the applicant, what happened, should not be favoring only the applicant, and what happened to reasonable, and how are the town residents benefiting from this new development PUD gateway site plan? One, gateway moratorium with the intensity. 9601 East Bay Harbor Drive is the most congested and dangerous gateway intersection for town residents. This new gateway PUD overlay site plan was supposed to follow the comprehensive plan, and not to accept TBR receiver, nor request off-street parking. Two, applicant was supposed to provide sufficient parking, and not have an impact on surrounding areas. Three, applicant was not to generate excessive noise or traffic congestion. And four, applicant was not to cause or be an excessive burden on public facilities. Is the possibility demand for new parking garage paid by the taxpayers? Five, applicant was not to cause excessive overcrowding or concentration. Six, applicant was to be compatible with the surrounding areas.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Newhart. That's her, her comments.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion in the second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Yaffe?
Four.
Councilmember Salver?
Four.
Councilmember Reed?
Opposed.
Councilmember Morano?
Opposed.
Councilmember Fuller?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bruder?
Yes.
Mayor Leonard?
Four.
Passes.
Thank you very much. Item number three.
Approval or denial of developed application for site plan approval of the gateway property located in 9601 East Bay Harbor Drive. If the council approval is given to the PUD zoning overlay and the gateway property development, approval should be subject to the acquisition of 20 TBR transfer development rights units.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I'm moving.
A second? Second. All right, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Fuller?
Four.
Councilmember Morano?
Opposed.
Councilmember Reed?
Opposed.
And Councilmember Salver?
Four.
Councilmember Yaffe?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bruder?
Opposed.
Mayor Leonard?
Four.
Passes.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A second, all right. We adjourn at 7:13 PM. Give us a few moments...